Okay, hi everybody. I'll call the meeting to order at 4:30.
Close the door.
Exactly, thank you. I would like to propose an agenda change because Suzanne's been kind enough to come to the meeting. I thought maybe we could, do you mind if we...
Wait a minute. It's a little tricky. It's a little tricky. See, that's why I couldn't move.
Try again.
Sorry, Nancy.
Oh, no, that's all right. Just gonna propose that we move Agenda Item D to before A. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, great. So, here we are.
Well, thank you for having me back yet again. And I do have packets for everybody. It's pretty simple. It's a mock-up of a potential contract between the two vendors, Cape Destinations and Cape Cab, because they will be paying an annual fee. And I tried to incorporate the list of items we discussed in previous meetings, portable toilets, keeping the area clean, no access to the school building, liability insurance. I do have a couple of questions. I always have a way. Okay. I don't know whether this is between this committee or the town of Walthamley and these entities. I'll need to check with Town Council on which way it should be. So, here, the beginning is blank, because I'm not sure who's gonna be considered, whether you go first, the town goes first, or what. But that's, that is just legal, beyond my purview of who goes first. The other articles in here, it's basically, they don't do what they're supposed to do, we can terminate within 10 days. They can't assign it to another company, say, "Look, we have this new agreement with Walthamley, would you like to park?" You know, blah, blah, blah. And also, several building. If one section of this is found to be illegal, beyond the fact that we aren't aware of it, it doesn't render the entire agreement null and void. The other parts can be contained. So, it's a basic page and a half boilerplate type of thing. And, obviously, a draft. So, if the committee has any additions to the bulleted items of what's required, it's simple enough to put them in. Last three pages of your handout, because I refer to attachment A, so I think we need to delineate the areas which the buses are allowed to park. This is a Google or picture. Blue marker, I don't know if it shows up well.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, we can...
That's good.
...attach those. And then, there'll be two kinds of bus parking placards. This one will be issued, and each bus company that pays the $5,000 per summer will get 12. And they can just put them on whatever bus they want to send, the buses they want to send that weekend. And we'll know, my people who are gonna be circulating, will make a note of what numbers appeared on which weekends, and at the end of the year, we'll have a really good count of what's going on. When buses appear, it's a one-off. We'll be collecting $50, and handwriting the date and the name of the company. And this will be left blank, and whoever, no, no, these will be numbered, but these will be put in as each weekend comes. And I will always have a different color paper, because every weekend we'll have a different color. So, you can't take the first weekend's paper and use it on the second weekend, because we're gonna be in a different color, and you won't know what it is till you drive it to Walthamley.
You tell them a different form for each week?
A different color.
Different color?
Yeah. Because people cheat more, a lot.
Oh, no.
And it's just, it's a sort of inventory control, as much as it...
Yeah.
I was recently gifted with 10 reams of brightly colored copy paper from a retired business person. So, this will be at no cost to the catalog. So, that's, I think I covered what you asked for, and I know what, sorry.
I was gonna ask, yeah, so I guess I don't understand. So, instead of a flat fee, it's gonna be $50 a time?
Well, the two companies are gonna be a flat fee. But there are little companies that come once or twice a summer, and they're not gonna wanna pay $5,000. If they wanna come one Saturday or one Sunday, it'll be $50 for that day.
But I thought...
Well, that, same question.
You were gonna say...
I thought we were only talking about buses.
Two companies.
I didn't know there was other...
Well, when I say, some of them send many buses, I mean, it's considered a limousine bus, but it might seat 20, 25 people, so it would be parked here.
But it's still from one of those two companies?
No, it's from whoever shows up, because we wanna get them from illegally parking, offer them a place to park.
That isn't, but our understanding was, we thought it was just these two companies, and not other people paying by the week, or anything like that. We're talking about more than what I understood.
Ninety percent of the vehicles that come to Walthamley are from those two companies. There are the random ones that are looking for a place to park. If you don't want them here, then we won't offer this up to them. But it seemed to be a way to legitimize the whole program and get everybody gathered into one area.
We'll have to think about that.
Yes, Martha?
Thank you. It says that leases shall provide proof of liability insurance of $1 million. Would somebody coming just once or twice in the summer also...
No, this is just for the two, oh, the 90 percent, the two companies that do the 90 percent.
Then what about liability for the others who use it?
Well, we don't charge, we don't usually require liability for the daily parkers, so I don't think that we could really require liability insurance for the random people that come.
Further questions?
So, this document represents our agreement with two bus companies. That's all it does.
Right. And it's, it would be, after I wrote it up, it's gonna be separate, one for each company. But, I mean, that's, the other companies that come down are a one-off. We don't have any control over until they arrive, if we don't know they're coming.
So, and I think that's the part that we're gonna need to discuss, because I think we were really just, when we had our discussion, I think last time, it was just about, we were under the impression that it was just the two bus companies.
Oh, I apologize for that.
So, we're still way in advance of your deadline.
Okay.
Correct?
We're still...
But perhaps we'll have a short discussion now about how people are feeling about it, and that way Suzanne's here for questions. So, just if we can take maybe the issues separately, and let's think about the agreement that we were prepared to think about today. Do we need more time to look over this contract? What, how are we thinking, or are we...
Well, I don't like having to agree to something that I haven't read and thought about.
Okay.
I don't have time to do that now.
Anybody else wanna comment on, do we want some time to read the contract?
I think that if one of us wants time to read the contract, then we should, wait, take time.
So, we'll read the contract for this one, and then why don't we have a short discussion about the other, in case there's, yes, Suzanne?
Just one point. Well, I wasn't looking for you to approve this contract, just to look at the bullet points and the requirements, and if you'd like any added or amended the language. And then, once you're comfortable with the final language, then it will go to Town Council for their overview.
Okay.
So, this is only the middle of the process. I'm not looking for any kind of approval.
Great. So then, we can definitely do that at the next meeting, Tom?
Just, Suzanne, what are your thoughts about this document, since we're not attorneys? Your legal counsel having a look at this, because counsel might have some suggestions to change anyways, right?
Absolutely.
That should be at the front end of this, probably, going forward.
Right. So, Suzanne, if you, as the board committee tonight, have any additions to the language before I submit it, that's what I'm looking for. And then, I'm sure when Carolyn gets it in her hands, she'll have suggestions or recommendations to Carolyn or the Town Council.
Well, the, this contract applies to the two bus companies we've talked about. We have nothing on paper about the other 10 percent, and we don't...
The other 10 percent are what was reported by the parking task force this summer, because they calculated as many as could be calculated on a daily basis. And, to tell you the truth, I don't even know who the other 10 percent are, and I'm not really sure how to handle them. I don't want them illegally parked around town, because it makes people nuts to see buses everywhere. And it looks careless on the part of each program not to offer them a solution to park. That's my wish.
Jan?
But you can understand, in light of the precautions that we wanted to take with the companies that we are going to contract with, that we don't want them, for example, coming and using the bathrooms that aren't, they haven't paid for, and not being liable for anything that might happen on our property, like these bus companies will be. So, that's what the concern is, you know, the lack of control. That's the very thing we don't want.
And I respect that. And, as I said, if we can even get 90 percent of them under these two, under this kind of agreement between you and the companies, with the blessing of Town Council, that would go a long way.
We'd like that.
That would go a long way.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And even just maybe thinking for next time, when we really have time to really kind of process and think, I know that when I go get a bonfire permit, I have to sign for one night to agree to certain things. So, perhaps, if we do wanna consider the people coming for this, that there is some sort of agreement, maybe it's not a signed contract, but it is an agreement, that we could maybe list some of our most priority concerns, no use of the bathrooms, and it certainly wouldn't be as detailed as a contract, but, so that's something we could think about next time.
Because we produce bullet points from the contract of the requirements of performance. We don't like to have all the other language.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I agree. So, if you, as I said, anybody has something to add or amend to the language of requirements, that would be perfect before I submitted to Town Council.
Okay.
I just have one more question. This other 10 percent, we don't know, you won't know either, which ones are coming. Is that right?
I don't. And the only, I might be able to capture half of them by doing a mailing to every limousine company in Southeast Massachusetts. Whether or not they pay attention to it, I have no idea. But at least if we set out, and we're gonna, I am going, well, with you, this is not my topic, but this is my thing. I'd like permission to put up signs for the summer that list the bullet points and requirements for all buses parked in the area. So that, your boss read this, but you may not have read it, so when you drive in as a driver, you would be able to see the required conduct.
Jill?
Just a concern and a curiosity, and I don't think it could be answered tonight, but a concern I have is, we did wanna take baby steps, and that's why we wanted just a year contract to see how it works out, a seasonal contract for the year. I'm a little bit concerned about the unpredictability of the 10 percent. So, like, say, what if there isn't a space for the two big companies that have already contracted with us, because of the random limousine or so that might show up? That could get pretty messy, and I'm not sure what sort of proactive steps could be taken, but, you know, there's just a limited amount of space. And the two companies, the Cape Destinations and the...
Cape Cab.
Cape Cab, you know, let's say they're running a little late, and one of the, you know, the 10 percent has already filled up the space. You know, I have a feeling it's gonna be a bit of a rumble for your people, you know?
Yeah, I absolutely see your point, and as with any new program, we can't, with 100% accuracy, predict how it's gonna go down.
Right. That's why I'm wondering whether we should just take little baby steps, since some of this is not computable, in a sense, you know, with the randomness of the 10 percent. And we wanna have good relations with the two companies that we're already contracting with. If it works out, then this could be totally a win-win situation in the future. I'm just wondering, with the randomness of the vehicles that could show up with that 10 percent business, could, the 10 percent business could be more than 10 percent, we can't tell.
Right.
Absolute truth. And if the committee is more comfortable with nodding to the two companies that will be under agreement for the summer of 2020 as an experiment, then I'll say thank you very much, and we'll go forward from there.
Thank you.
You had, I'm sorry, Suzanne, you had an estimate, didn't you, originally, of the number of buses that you, we kind of thought that were gonna be here when we were looking at the two companies? I'll have to look back at my notes, but...
I don't remember exactly, I don't have those notes with me, but they, I think there's gonna be more Cape Destination buses than funk buses, because the funk buses tend to pick up, drop off, go do something else, and then come back at the end of the day and pick up. So, not a lot of those are parked for the day, unless someone has chartered the bus to the game, and they have a right to be at their picnic hall all day.
Yeah, so I have the number 10. I said capacity, can we fit 10? So, I had that question.
That was the destination of the Cape Destination's owner, Jay, and Raphael Richter, who owns Cape Cab, and they came on the school parking lot. That was their estimation. Would you like to limit it to 10 per day? Would that make you comfortable? I mean, just a thought.
Yeah. Well, I think these are all things that we can think about, I feel like, anything...
Suzanne, I'm just looking at our notes from last, our last meeting, and it actually says, thank you, Ann, the superintendent suggested they be careful about who will park at the school, in parentheses, two companies only. It's what we had agreed on, I guess. And I feel that, in terms of oversight, I'd feel much more comfortable if we, for this year anyway, kept it at two companies.
So, this is a pilot project?
Yeah.
It's totally in your purview. Whatever you are willing to allow, then we will go forward under those, under those conditions.
May I ask a question?
May I?
Looking at the Google map on Lawrence Road, the parking spaces across from the school, and that quasi-parking space from when the police department was set up there, are those places that buses or limousine buses potentially could park? Is that...
I'd have to ask the select one, because that's considered town property.
It is, okay. I just didn't know if they came up here and they saw that those spaces were available, as opposed to what is outlined, would they naturally pull in there? Or is that something that would be not permitted?
I think the parking places above the field, per se, are only for vehicles. Probably a minivan would be the largest, pickup truck would be the largest vehicle that would comfortably fit in those. Might get a couple of buses in the paved area by the temporary park of the police station.
Except, of course, that's town land that's going to be used for the housing, so, maybe, not this summer.
Right.
Not this summer, but, I mean, don't count on it in the future.
There isn't any signage that says town property.
Yeah.
Or anything like that.
Tom?
I was just gonna say, that's a town's issue.
Yes.
And we're talking about a school parking lot that we wanna have good control over, and we have certain things that we expect to happen with these two bus companies for a fee. And I think I heard Suzanne say that they're pleased that the school system is moving forward, trying to help the town out, and will learn a lot in the first year, and we'll see where that takes us. And I think whatever else happens in any of the parking, other than the school parking lot, is the town's responsibility, how they want it.
And it is, and it's not anything that you, you two, gotta figure out, because parking is the moving target. And I do appreciate you considering your property to help with that.
Something you said a few minutes ago is that, this contract is with the company, but the driver may not know that. No, the one that concerns me is the, to make sure nobody there uses this building, the restrooms or anything like that. So, but the driver may not know that. Do we have somebody supervising the parking, or no?
There'll be people checking to make sure there's a placard that's been generated by the town to allow them to park. And I had mentioned before, we'll put up signage for the season that has the rules and regulations for using this parking area. We're not gonna have somebody on location to...
We won't.
When we look at the bullet about the leases are responsible for providing a minimum of two portable toilets, so there could be signage on those. Where are those going?
The, well, there's language in there, the citing is to be determined by the school committee.
Yeah.
Where you're comfortable with them. I sort of thought it made sense to put them over on the north side of the parking lot, where the wood start, sort of in that area, where they can be accessed by the truck to clean them, and yet they're not in the way of people trying to use the school property.
Okay. Just so they're visible to the people who are driving these...
The buses.
Yeah.
Well, there's only gonna be two companies. If we, if it's limited to the two companies, then I, we can count on the two owners to educate their drivers.
Okay.
They're responsible business people, so, and they want this, because they don't wanna annoy everybody with all the buses. Not for business.
Okay. Do we have enough information to think about until next time? Martha?
I'm still looking at my old notes. You asked, who will monitor the buses, but that was last month. Do you remember what you meant? Did you mean by that, who will watch the parking lot?
I think I meant it.
Got it.
Yeah, like, having a bus pass, I think we discussed it.
Wait, what did you just say?
Martha asked me, that, asked me about my question last month, about who will monitor the buses, and what that was in reference to. And I, the answer to my question was that they're gonna each have something, so that the town, when the town comes by to check, like, beach stickers, they're gonna check parking stickers, that there will be a yes or a no situation.
Right. The, I have circulating people, as most of you know, who go through the lot, but most of our lots do not have attendants, so they go to the other attendant lots and check for parking stickers, and...
Don't come here.
Going over Lawrence Road is one of their regular routes, so to stop and check the buses two days a week will not be owners, especially if they have like 10, 15 a week in a day. And this summer, I'm putting GPS locators on their neighbors, so they won't know exactly where to go. And I'll know how often they went to Lawrence Road to check.
Okay.
That's what you're getting for a person.
Devious.
All right. So, kinda to wrap this up, I feel like our committee is leaning towards the original, what we interpreted was the original agreement. However, I think we'll just maybe stick it on the agenda one more time, so that we can have a chance to look this over.
Look the draft.
And we'll surface that discussion one more time about the extra 10 percent, and just to see if we're all really in agreement, have consensus on that issue. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Great, thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you so much. And I said, we appreciate the call, just look on the bullet requirements, because you must get them in there before Town Council looks at it. And we have, you know, the bus, my attention to legal documents, maybe less than a lot of it, we'll see.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Thank you, Suzanne.
You know, it's strange. I've been, in my brain, it was two companies. I was picturing two buses.
Oh.
But I didn't realize it could be 10, it could be more, and that there were others that they don't know about, and suddenly...
I don't think we knew that. I think that was pretty, none of us remember that, right, the discussion?
No, that was a new part.
Yeah. So, that's why you keep talking about it, right? Clarifying.
Is there, is there on here? I did not see anything about a fee.
But I didn't hear you.
I didn't see anything on the contract about a fee.
I think she mentioned that the fee wasn't on here, it was just that flat rate.
Where is it?
It's not on the contract, it's just a flat rate, yeah.
In consideration, they will pay what we ask for, right? Well, there was that debate between $5,000 and $7,500, right?
Yeah. We didn't, I didn't want to. So, all right, I need to apologize, because in my haste to give Suzanne some priority agenda, location, I forgot about the chairs and the members speak portion, so I'm gonna back up a little bit, and chairs report. I just wanted to publicly, I know that the committee knows that I sent thank you notes to the people who provided for the free breakfast program from St. Vincent de Paul, but I also wanted to publicly thank Jan, because she was sort of the go-getter on that, and so just how much we appreciate, you know, when members go the extra mile and are always thinking of our school. So, thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Is there any members speak?
I don't know whether this should be here or under, it's not really part of the strategic planning, but I did meet with Becky Rosenberg on Friday to talk about programming here, and she was very appreciative. I met with two other people, Michelle Olem and Joan Zoukis, and she is, she appreciated it, and I think she will be moving forward with some more programming. We have that to report.
Where will they, where will it be? Where will they be?
Will they do adult programming?
Whatever.
It'll be various classrooms.
No, but I, aren't, isn't she gonna have an office here?
She does.
Where is that?
That is in Nanticock Connell's old preschool.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're all moved in.
Okay.
Great. Yes?
I had something too. I need to hope that someone else on this committee is willing to go to the wellness subcommittee meetings, because I missed the first one, and reported about it to you from Claudia's notes, but that's not the same as attending. And I asked her, I said I could come any afternoon except Tuesday, and I found out at 11:30 this morning that this, the next meeting was today, Tuesday, with no notice whatsoever, and so, obviously, I cannot function on that committee if I can't make the meeting. So...
What time do they meet?
They, today was...
Right after...
Right after school, on Tuesdays. So, I put that out there, but I, I'm very sorry. I hate to miss my responsibility, and the only way I can get around that is by not having the responsibility, so...
But if they meet on Tuesdays, at this time, who, none of us could go.
No, at 2:00.
At 2:00.
It's 2:00. It's 2:00. No, I have something else.
Yeah, I can't, I'm at work at 2:00.
No, you're working, so... So, okay, well...
I can't do anything till we finish the strategic plan.
Okay. And your cup is full, and so, I guess we're just not covering the... And your cup is full, and so I guess we're just not covering the wellness committee. I feel very badly, but I am resigning.
Would there be a way, similar to PTA, that you could get me a report and we could read it or something?
Sure.
Or you get me the notes from those and then maybe we could just review it at that time and that's the best, we'll keep ourselves informed.
Best we can do right now.
Yeah, yeah. I think so.
So, I'll send those directly to you.
Yeah, why don't you do that? So, we'll report out that way. Any other members? Great, do we have citizens who wish to speak? Thanks for coming Fred.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll apologize in advance, I have to go to the select board meeting.
At six, yeah.
Me too.
Okay.
Posing.
Yep.
So, then let's move on to principals report.
Okay. One addition to the principals report is I have connected with resident Judith Kumbler, who does our international book club, and so she will be starting that up again on Monday, January 6th, with five students from grades four and five, and they will be reading the book Wonder. So, the books have to come in. And a couple of the students had approached me today, very excited and hoping that they can join that book club because they work with Judith on the knitting club, so they're hoping to join that as well. So, that was my only other addition, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions about?
Wonderful.
Been good?
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll hear from Tom.
Well, it's nice to see you all again, and just a few pieces that I have been working on. I've spent quite a bit of time, over a couple of days, following up on the project-based learning program. I jumped in on listening to the final results from some of the projects by the teachers and over at Stony Brook, and I could tell you that there was a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of excitement, concerns going forward in terms of the time factors and how do we train other people and things like that, but that was expected. And then I followed up on Friday, going to, we had the professors from the creative learning lab in, who had done some professional development on project-based learning. And they were having robust discussions at all three levels, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, on the projects and lessons learned and so forth. So, it was a robust discussion and enjoyed it very much. And the wheels are churning in terms of what do we do from this point forward to continue this initiative and in some cases see it grow going forward. I think the vast majority of the people involved in the projects really enjoyed the experience and what it did in the classroom relative to student learning in a very positive way. So, that was, that was good for me. I've really worked hard to get out of my office and be in the buildings, visiting the schools with so many other big projects that we're dealing with this year on the table. It's, it's something that, it's really important for me to do, to remember what my job is all about, and that's working with kids and education. I can tell you that, really interesting, I took advantage of our superintendent's meeting and Dr. Cox at the community college has been after a number of us to be, go log to Plymouth Airport and see their program in aviation. And I was really excited that I took that time to go see it. And what they have is, I wasn't even sure what Plymouth Airport was, but we, we had a number of us that went out to see this program, and it is about mechanics, aviation mechanics. And they have six hangars with six jets, and it was stunning to see that program. And, and so they're very successful with students, they're doing, I believe it was nineteen hundred and seventy hours to get through the program.
Whoa.
They actually have recruiters as part of the program, and I've signed them up to come to Nauset Regional High School's guidance office and make sure that we get our councils out there to see this as well. And it was a robust program, amazing, and.
Is it part of Plymouth High School or Cape Cod?
It's Cape Cod Community College's program.
Cape Cod Community College.
And they got a lot of dollars from the federal government and some other state incentives, incentives that have this. I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars in this program. And I think it's a great opportunity for, I'm sure, in our system, a few students who have that interest. Interesting enough, Jet Blowers involved in it, Delta, and it isn't very long after they graduate that they're looking at, in some cases, a possibility of a hundred thousand dollars salaries. So, I'm anxious to get our people to see this and talking to students about it and.
Sign you up?
Mary Beth and I said, let's get you to John.
Sign you up.
We've added to our plate, you like to know what's going on in the district at some level, and so the voters in Brewster voted for a feasibility study for both the senior citizen program and the elementary school. So, we are working, we'll be meeting tomorrow, Giovanna and I have an appointment with the town manager and his finance people, and we're talking about eighty-five thousand dollars to do a feasibility study fairly quickly. And it will involve, I'm sure, an educational visioning activity, and you're familiar with that certainly, and then a scope of work, and then some type of analysis of space to program. And that's, for many of you veteran people here, you know this has been a hot topic in that town for 25 years. So, that's going on. High school project is very time-consuming and needs to be, it's, we're talking upwards to, coming to the community just under a hundred million dollars in funding. And we're in a phase where we're reloading for, right after the holiday break, we hope to have very large models that everyone can understand exactly what this project is going forward. We're finishing up the schematic phase, we're negotiating tomorrow with contracts with our own project manager and our architectural firm, going forward beyond the schematic piece of this. And, and we're cleaning up a lot of the process questions. We know that we're going to be voting in all four towns at town meetings, and then we anticipate they'll be going to the ballot box on the second vote. We clearly tried to make sure all the towns know that it will take eight votes.
See, I was going to ask you last time, you said the region was considering making it though, and that, that didn't happen.
So, we know it's going to, it's going to go eight votes, four at the town halls and four probably at the ballot box, and it takes eight out of eight. And where the board, I applaud them. It is the voters' school, and so we, I'm pleased with that. We're talking about bonds and with the community still in terms of how the towns would like to see us move forward with the bonding. And of course, it deals with 20 to 30, 20%, 25%, 30% bonds and things like that, so.
How do you have time for anything else?
It's all going. And my biggest headache is snow days. And by the way, we live in New England, we live in New England.
Suck it up. Go to school when it's one to three.
Suck it up.
I know our viewers watching the show understand that, as we go into tomorrow morning very early. And I think that's a good sense of what I've been up to, but a couple of discipline issues with, you know, potential terminations, nothing in this, in this district. And, but we're trying to hold our staffs to high standards and that's, that's fair for everybody, and our kids, our staff, and our communities. So, it's pretty busy, plus the budget season.
Yeah.
And I just want to certainly thank Mary Beth for all her work in helping us get this prepared today, and obviously Ann and Giovanna, they are big, big pieces of this for us and they do great work, and as you know, and I thank them all three.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
That's a good lead in.
Yeah.
And we got our budget review.
Ready?
I'm ready. Let's go directly to page eight of the report.
Just looking at today, this month's report first.
Oh, that first.
And then we'll do the 21 after in the notebook. 21 is in the notebook.
Oh, yeah. I'm way ahead of myself.
I skipped an agenda item, you skipped an agenda item.
What am I thinking?
I led you astray.
Yep.
Flustered about snow days. Yes, go ahead.
All right. The prior month balance was negative thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. We spent, or encumbered since last month's reporting, an additional seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars, leaving a negative balance of forty-nine thousand two hundred and four dollars. We still have reclassifications to be made to FY19 circuit breaker funds, FY19 tuition, and FY20 tuition funds as well and building use. So, those total ninety thousand five hundred and one dollars, so if you factor those in, the balance right now is forty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I'm going to highlight some of the areas that had substantial movement since last month's reporting, that encompassed that seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars that was spent on the encumbrance last month's reporting. Starting on page one, towards the top of the page, line item 4016, the salaries instructional coordinators, we spent or encumbered seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars since last month's reporting. Okay. Line item 4006, the salary secretary, also here we spent or encumbered twenty-eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and that's probably to encumber for subcalling expenses. Still on this page at the bottom, 4077, special needs contracted services medical therapeutic, here we spent or encumbered ten thousand dollars, and that's all based on the student needs. Any questions on page one? Moving on to page two, towards the bottom of the page, line item 4070, the special needs salary assistant, we spent or encumbered eleven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and that is for personal care students, and that's all based on a new student. Any questions on page two?
Yeah, could you explain that one to me, the variance sum of 4070?
Mary Beth?
Sure. We had a student who moved into the district at the end of the summer, who was a special needs student in the substantially separate program, and I had to hire another educational assistant.
Oh, so this is an add.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to page three, at the top of the page, line item 4015, the stephen's mentor, we spent or encumbered a thousand and eleven dollars since last month's reporting. Any questions on page three? Moving on to page four, towards the middle of the page, line item 4084, the special needs contracted services psychological, here we, we unencumbered some funds totaling ninety-eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars since last month's reporting, and that is due to a reclassification. We reclassified the expenses to line item 4067, special needs contracted services therapeutic. Any questions on page four? Moving on to page seven, at the top of the page, line item 4056, the contracted services equipment, we spent or encumbered twenty-five hundred and forty-six dollars since last month's reporting. Any questions?
Why aren't we glad for the prepayments that we were able to do? The bill would have been terrible otherwise.
We'll continue to monitor and we'll try to make these adjustments before next month's meeting, so we get a better picture.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the capital improvement plan?
This is the redesigned one, I guess, with the playground moving up. Couple places, right, Mary Beth? Like we talked about last time, so.
Well, that moved it up, but it's a gold-plated playground, in my opinion.
No, that's, that's a low number.
My house was built for that amount of money, and it includes architecture, architects fees too.
The one at Stony Brook, I believe he said.
Two hundred and forty.
Two forty.
Well, I think they overpaid too. But I don't, I don't know what this is like, so I can't.
It's for a K two, two population.
Is that ours too?
No, we're K five.
Theirs was for K two.
Well, I think, I certainly think we need to go back to drawing board on that one. I don't know how it could come to quarter of an hour. Anybody else feel the way I do?
Well, we talked last time about maybe getting parents involved, the community involved, and approaching it in a different way to sort of offset some of the costs by getting volunteer labor. And I certainly hope when the time comes that we'll give that a try. That's our, you know, we try to do whatever we can to minimize the burden on the taxpayer, and I think that might be one way we could do it more, and I agree with you, it's a lot of money.
Tom, and then Martha.
Thank you. I just, I want you to know that we have a lot of planning to do and a lot of work, and Jan just mentioning the possibility of using volunteers and so forth. We, and you know this, but I need to say it, that if we don't need to spend the money, we won't spend the money.
Right.
And, and I think if this, this ends up being a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, then we're going to give that money back to the town. We're not going to, and, and I think we all are concerned about a dollar amount and being fiscally responsible and finding ways to help ourselves, including, so I think it's, it's a placeholder right now. For instance, when we talk about the high school project, we're talking about a hundred and forty million dollars. It's not going to be a hundred and forty million dollars. It's, we see that number as a ceiling, the absolute limit, we can't even go, go over that number. I kind of look at it in the same thing with Mary Beth, and, and if we can bring it in cheaper, we will, and if we want a nice quality playground, we don't need a Cadillac, and, and we have some creative ways to work with our community to help us. And so I think that's the position we should be in.
Martha, and then Mary.
Some of the work that we're doing on the strategic plan might actually fit in when we're talking about community schools and getting multi-generational groups trying to solve a problem. That's one, you know, certainly getting the families involved. We're, we're trying to get there.
And Mary Beth?
And just to remind people that the estimates that we have in here, most of them came from the Habib report.
Right.
So, it wasn't a number that we came up with.
Right.
It was the number that came from that report.
They came up.
And Jill?
I feel that the playground is a wonderful opportunity for us to be creative. I, I'd like to elaborate a little bit on this. I feel like this is a wonderful opportunity for what we can do to make our elementary school even more special. So, for instance, today I worked at a school in Quincy, and they had a STEM area as part of their outdoor learning, outdoor play area. And basically, it was ramps and gears, the great big gears. I feel like this is a wonderful opportunity for us to get creative and to have something beyond, better than just a stationary, multipurpose climbing structure. So, I'm very excited about this opportunity. Woo!
Something else too.
But, you know, just.
Is that the alarm bell?
No.
I'm not sure what that is.
Just very quickly.
I'd like a picture of that.
You know, in thinking about community resources, this is a community rich with landscapers, builders, people with interests, people with green thumbs. I'm also thinking about the Vogue Tech School, they have a horticultural department where it could be, you know, native plants and terracing and life cycle and planting butterfly gardens, and, you know, it could get so tied into so many learning standards as well. Maybe AmeriCorps can be brought into this, as well as maybe even businesses having a sponsorship, maybe they'll have a little plaque for businesses donated to the ramp that got built, you know, for balls and, you know, you know, speed and acceleration and all that. Yeah, so even, you know, perhaps, you know, a food garden, but I feel like this is an opportunity for us to be very thoughtful on what we do and how we do it.
It'd be fun.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, so I've made some notes that I, I think that this is definitely a topic that can be surfaced for us and maybe we search, you know, into it. We can't let Jill's expertise go to waste.
Right, right. And it's timing too, to figure out.
Yeah, so even, you know, perhaps, you know, a food garden. But I feel like this is an opportunity for us to be very thoughtful on what we do and how we do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, so I've made some notes that I think that this is definitely a topic that can resurface for us and maybe we search, you know, into it. We can't let Jill's expertise go to waste.
And it's timing, too, to figure out when we have to start a process like this and to get the word out and so forth, to make it happen in an appropriate time when the money is available.
Yeah, and the, the people who do have businesses, their availability, you know. So, you know, the goal is always to have it up and running for the fall.
Right.
But is that other practical.
I know.
Right, very busy season that they're not available.
Right, so it'll take a little coordination, I think.
All right, anything else about the capital improvement plan that anybody wants to discuss? Okay, let's move past that and go to, we have feedback from M.A.S.C. I'm sorry, did I miss something?
A motion to approve it?
Sorry.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
The amended.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm in favor with amendments.
As a placeholder, right?
Yeah.
We can approve it as the placeholder.
Who's going to play the part of placeholder?
Okay, feedback from M.A.S.C.
Woo, it's going to be tough to keep this short, but I will. The resolutions committee, all those resolutions that people looked over and we discussed, they all passed with the exception of a couple of amendments. So, for instance, resolution six, universal quality pre-kindergarten access in Massachusetts, that really deals with communities that are underserved, communities that don't have quality preschools. The added amendment to that, which they both passed, was adding universal kindergarten. Yep, mhm. And the other one that had an amendment and they both passed was the pertaining to the educator diversity and professional licensure. It passed fifty-four to twenty-four for eliminating the MTOS and the Massachusetts Performance Assessment. The amendment was that the Massachusetts School Committees call for governance and licensure of professional educators to be vested in a board comprised of licensed educators. But that needs to be fleshed out some more. Remember, this is not the law. This is just lobbying. So resolutions. The theme of the conference this year was leading in times of change. And out of all the workshops I took, I feel the one that really resonated, since we do try to market what we're doing and what makes us special, was strengthening your district's branding.
Say that again?
Strengthening your district's branding.
What does that mean?
A brand, marketing, yep. So what this dealt with was marketing yourselves and applauding yourself, getting it out, you know, what makes your school special and why. But really letting people in the community know what we do and what are our strengths. And it was emphasizing stuff we know, but stuff that we can improve on more and more, you know, as far as the press, social media, which we've discussed before, and a good, clear, clean, concise website. It was emphasized that the content be simple and relevant to the experience. What I felt was really worthwhile was another suggestion was actually budgeting a bit of money, a little bit of money dedicated to a communication team. People who would be responsible, credible, competent, efficient, responsible people, who would be the ones who would monitor social media and communication. So maybe human resources, maybe people who would be interested in doing that sort of thing out of the central office, not just, you know, a parent or whatever, somebody who has their finger on the pulse of what's going on. But a message of what is truly distinctive about the school and communicating and having a plan. We did discuss this a bit about social media, like who would be the one, what would they respond to? When and where, who? Digital tools. It was emphasized that eighty percent of the population is mobile responsive. So, you know, all the Instagram and all that stuff, you know. The media, you know, reminder to invite the media to events and exciting things that are going on. And sometimes we have to write our own press releases to get the things out. Very important to state and restate the core message of what the school is about, especially at budget time, before budget time even, to remind people what is the mission, what is our, what is our core message? There's so much more, but again, it was, especially this time of school choice and kinds of competition with other schools, it just made sense about marketing your brand.
Thank you.
I think we do a good job of trying to do that.
Yes, and it was validating.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I do like to, a budget meeting, beginning with our mission statement. You know, reminding what we're about before budgets, budget talk.
Well, I also, that just sort of makes me think Dan Horton did invite the chairs to go to the select meeting once a month. And so I can't go tonight.
Did you go to it?
No, I would have gone tonight if I had thought we could push it in and, and get there. But I do plan on going and I thought I could make a regular appearance and then again, just be like core messaging. Especially after our last meeting where we were really talking about sort of just broader educational change and, you know, project-based learning, just, you know, getting the kids engaged and shifting that way. I mean, right now I'm speaking off the fly, but I would be prepared with like a pretty succinct, sort of what I do in my summaries, you know, I'm going to do the summary anyways. But, you know, it's always nice to see it in person.
I think your summaries are very good. They're going to capture.
Takes me an hour and a half to deal with that one.
Sorry.
But, well, if you want to make it sound right, I usually write a draft and look it over in the morning and stuff. And that's the way we need to be, we're going to be out there. But I, so I did circle core message and I'll, I'll make sure that I, I can get there and start making a presence there at the select meeting, because I think that'll be important. Okay.
Well, it's a nice segue into the FY twenty-one draft budget. If I may read my presentation.
You may.
Thank you. Wealthly Elementary School believes that every child matters, is unique, deserves to feel safe, and has the capacity to learn. West continues to strive for social, emotional, and academic excellence for all learners. Our highly qualified educators utilize exceptional instructional practices and innovative programming. Our intensive special education classrooms provide an on-campus collaborative program, thus keeping students in their neighborhood elementary school. West has small class sizes and strong community involvement, and strong community school engagement improves learning outcomes for students. West's thriving community partnerships continues to expand with local organizations such as the Wealthly Historical Society Museum, the Cape Cod Family Resource Center, SPAT, and the Chastity Yacht and Country Club. This fall, West welcomed the Wealthly Recreation Department, offering them an on-campus office space. The Recreation Department will utilize the school in the evenings and on the weekends as a center of lifelong learning, thus making West a resource hub of the community. The FY twenty-one West draft budget comes in at a three point four seven percent increase. Staffing reductions are reflected in the draft FY twenty-one budget. The librarian position has been reduced from forty percent to ten percent. The technology integration position has been reduced from eighty percent to sixty percent. And the school guidance position has been reduced from one hundred percent to eighty percent. In addition, circuit breaker funds from FY twenty totaling thirty-seven thousand one hundred eighteen will be applied to prepay the FY twenty-one special needs contracted OTPT services. The FY twenty-one tuition we received from the town of Eastham totaling twenty-nine thousand one hundred forty-three will be applied to the FY twenty-one special needs preschool transportation account. Twenty thousand dollars for four school choice students will be applied to contracted services, non-instructional technology. And seven thousand dollars for the building use funds will be applied to contracted services building. The FY twenty-one draft budget maintains all current academic programs, interventions in the free after-school childcare program. The FY twenty-one draft budget reflects level funding for many line items as well as reductions and increases in specific line items. And I, I have a copy for all of you and it lays out what those reductions and decreases, I mean, increases are. The West Free After-School Childcare Program has been a great resource to our working parents. Of the ten new students who entered West in September, five are registered for ASC. To date, thirty-nine students or thirty percent, thirty-six percent are enrolled in the program with up to thirty-one students attending daily. It is our goal to continue this free of charge program in FY twenty-one. In FY twenty-one, we have increased the ASC budget by only one thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars totaling forty-three thousand five oh three. The increase reflects a two point five percent increase in the three staff salaries and a five hundred dollar increase in materials and supplies. To close, the regular day portion of the West FY twenty-one draft budget increases by fifty thousand, fifty thousand five hundred sixteen dollars at two point five nine percent. And the special education portion increases by forty-three thousand one hundred forty dollars or five point seven six percent. The total increase from FY twenty to FY twenty-one is ninety-three thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars or three point four seven percent. Thank you. So I do have a copy for everybody.
Oh, good.
That's a good presentation.
Oh, thank you.
The special education line item would have been higher had we not had circuit breaker and other funding to go towards those line items. It would have been additional sixty-six thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars. So with the, the funding sources, we are basically prepaying over ninety-three thousand dollars. When I first started the budget, it was an increase of eleven point three.
That's why those cuts.
Right, so we, we did the cuts where we could without impacting, again, any interventions or programs. And the only other place that I could, and I don't want to do this, that I would have to go to if I had to go further lower than three point four seven, would be the after-school program. Because there isn't any other place. And we don't want to do that.
Can I ask you, though, did you say four choice students?
Yes, we would like to increase it to two additional.
Okay, but I mean, that's news to, to us.
Right.
Um.
That's what you would like to do?
That's what we would like to do. So this is all draft. So that's what we would like to do.
This is the brainstorm, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we do have that discussion every year about school choice. Yes, Tom?
So I just want to add to, to Mary Beth's comments. This is a, you know, we deal with multiple budgets. This is the most difficult budget we're dealing with, even beyond the region.
Really?
We have a diverse population of students here.
Yeah, a lot of special needs.
It's diverse and, and it demands certain services. The question I ask of each principal, and since we're talking just about this school tonight, I asked Mary Beth, will this budget continue the robust program that we have for students here at this, at this school? And if she were to say no, then we would do things differently. That's a, that's a must. And she feels that we can keep the excellence that we have in this school at this level with this budget. We understand it's, it's a little bit higher than typically we would see. We'd like to get to two and a half, particularly in a year where we're going for the high school building project. But there was no more that we could do. And from our vantage point of, we spent a lot of hours, Mary Beth Giovanna and I, looking at this and all our angles. And it's tight, there's no question, it's tight.
Tom, would you, because you said in terms of diverse population, would you say a little bit more about that?
So there, there are students who need some accommodations that are, that aren't necessarily found just in a regular classroom. And, and we need to make sure, one of the, one of the beautiful things about this school is it wants to keep its students in its school whenever it can. And I've heard that from the community as well in all the meetings that we've had. Because the transportation piece of moving our students outside of this system is almost unbearable.
Very expensive.
The distances that we have to travel. So Mary Beth has done a wonderful job in weaving this all together. Giovanna has given, she probably looked at ten or twelve scenarios of what happens if we go in this direction or that. And a lot of work was given to those scenarios by Giovanna so that we could understand. And quite honestly, at three point four seven, we just said we can't. And we were going to have nothing to do with touching that after-school program. It's a wonderful program for our community. So thank you.
Well, I think we are all, just speaking of, I think we are all in favor of keeping that program and don't want anything to happen to it.
Mary Beth, I'd like to thank you for all of your work. I whispered a few minutes ago that you're like a magician.
It's a team, it's definitely a team.
I thought she meant with a paper, but I didn't.
Without even looking, she did.
Yeah, I know, it was amazing.
I, I think we have to keep reminding the town that in addition to having a wonderful school and a wonderful program, we have held the line at under two and a half percent for the past several years. And this is the first blip that we've been required to make. Meanwhile, our classes are growing. I mean, we don't have tiny, any tiny classes anymore. So it's not like we have, one time people talked about this as like a private school, you know. But the average classroom is eighteen, nineteen children. And that's, that's what you need for providing excellent education, so.
And very well taken. Last year, I believe we came in at two point five percent. The year before that, it was minus point seven percent.
Right.
And we're anticipating seventeen kindergarteners in the fall, which is wonderful.
Good.
And, and with being able to keep all of our students here, it does require people. It requires quality people and it's the salaries that really impact the budget.
Well, looks like we are going to stand behind you a hundred percent.
We were, I've been here long enough to remember when the finance committee just came in and criticized us and said, why are we spending all that, and just endless criticism. But what was his name? I can't remember. He said, never mind. He says, because of you, the town can't afford it, so many other things. Just because of us, not some other demand.
So I think if I, if I might, you know, we have the chairman of the FINCOM here. He's always looking to know about what's happening and he comes to your office. I know he sees Mary Beth a great deal. He comes down to our office and he's, he's doing a great job for you. And he's, he's, he understands what's going on, I know that. So it's wonderful. So Fred, thank you very much for all your work. So Fred, thank you very much for all your input.
Indeed.
Keep it up, Fred.
Keep it going.
I think we know, we know ours, the points we're going to need to make to get public support for this. And I think...
I really regret the librarian going down to 10%.
Yeah. Could you talk to that a little bit?
I've actually kept the librarian at that percentage for the past two years when the required minutes had decreased throughout the district. And so I held it as long as I could.
Right.
And so now this coming FY-21 is when I had to reduce it to be 25 minutes per grade level per week.
Which is nothing.
Right.
So I guess I, my thoughts would be that how we interface with the public library in town becomes ever more important to the children.
She's very involved.
And she is. I have noticed so many more things on weekends that the town library is sponsoring for the children. And so I think that we need to be very mindful of encouraging that connection.
Well, I'm on the board of the Friends of Library, and that subject comes up all the time. And Anna and Jennifer always come up with ideas for the children to be involved.
Anna and I just met, gosh, the week before Thanksgiving. We had a nice meeting.
Well, that'll help, but, you know, it's sad that we have to, I don't know, compromise, but anyway.
I don't think we have anything to apologize for in this.
I think the report shows that we're doing our due diligence.
Yeah.
You know? And I think our past behavior, where when we have extra money, we have returned it to the town, our past actions, I guess, as well as, you know, keeping it under the required 2.5 at or below for several years. And so, you know, I look forward to the discourse with the town. Certainly, you know, we should be open to criticism and asking questions, and it gives us a chance to talk about our school and our priorities, and to have that conversation, I think is okay, too.
Nancy, can I mention a concern of mine? The last several years, because we have been under the radar, because we haven't made any waves and we haven't been higher than 2.5, we also haven't been properly vetted with the appropriate committees. We haven't been to the FinCom in a bunch of years. We go to the Selectments meeting with just sort of a presentation, and it just goes, okay, okay, and, you know. I think maybe because this year needs a little bit more explanation, we ought to make a point of making sure we get out there with our information before town meeting so that we have the FinCom and the Selectment understanding and approving our budget.
Can I ask you a question? We do have Mary Beth and Tom coming to the FinCom every year. Are you saying that you want to have the committee come to the FinCom as well, and would you like to be there at the same time?
Yes, yes, Fred, in case there, just to show support, just to show, you know...
I'll make sure that you...
Thank you.
So the question is, I would think at this point, we know that you've just seen this for the first time, and so we should give you some time with it. You've heard a lot of comments about this, and we'll come in and put it on the agenda at the next meeting and give you a chance, I would think, at that point to get your questions answered, but with the idea that we potentially could take a vote at the next meeting on this budget.
Okay. When I write my summary, should I include information about the increase or not?
Yeah, I think...
I would get it out there.
We have nothing to hide.
Right, yep. Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks for coming, Fred. Thank you.
And thank you for your work.
And your support.
Right, that's the important part.
Good. Good, invite them to lunch.
By the way, I asked...
Here, here.
I asked Suzanne...
Invite them to lunch here.
I asked Suzanne, I talked before the meeting, I mentioned that Bob Keller used to come from the FinCom, and she's, he doesn't live here anymore. That's why we don't see him at our meetings.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say, I thought I wanted to say something.
Don't say it.
All right, I won't say it. Wasn't a very strong thought, was it? Okay.
It gets worse.
Cape Cod Collaborative.
Martha has a request.
I have to leave by 20:00 because I work at 6:30.
Would you like us to rearrange the report? What would you like to report on, Martha?
Whatever you'd like. Actually, I need to report on the strategic planning, and that can be very...
Okay, that, are we reporting on all the subcommittees? Because there's a sub, now several of us are on subcommittees, so...
Oh, not on the working groups.
No.
I can, I have a general, I had a strategic planning steering committee meeting last night.
Okay, okay. Good, so we'll do strategic plan, we'll do substance abuse. Is that good?
Yep.
Okay, go.
Okay, so in terms of the strategic plan, all of the working groups have met at least once, most of them have now met twice. And the groups are working on objectives for each of our five goals, which you saw in the presentation. What I can, what I have been told, I can only talk about my group, and we've only met once, but some of us have done a lot of homework to move us along so we can get these objectives and initiatives done within four meetings, which is our hope. The groups are working very, very well. We're really excited about what's happening. There are so many people from so many places coming together to talk about things, and just amazing conversations going on about education, a lot of reading. So that, the working groups are going really, really well, as far as I can tell. And I'll have more at our next meeting, because we'll probably not be finished with them, but ready. Our plan is to present, I believe in January, we're hoping to present at the joint school committee meeting, our, the actual format for the strategic plan, what that's going to look like, what's going to be in it. And a few of us will be working on that, actually during, I believe it's on December 27th during the break. We kind of run out of meeting times. The Substance Abuse Task Force is now actually, and has been for a while, we just keep forgetting to let people know, Substance Abuse Mental Health Task Force, because those issues are so related. Where we have wound up going over our surveys and have come to the conclusion that now it's time to actually go forward with some of the things that the administration had pointed out as things that were really, really important. A lot of the things that we want to do, we want to actually wait until the social-emotional learning and the other pieces of the strategic plan come together, because a lot of what we're doing really dovetails beautifully with some of the goals that have come up during the strategic planning process. So we are looking at our mission, thinking about how to change our mission, and to also form a vision about where we want to go in the future with this, and what we're looking at K through 12. And that's where we stand. I don't think there's anything else that...
Martha, you feel that the subcommittees on the strategic plan book have completed their work?
No. Oh, no, no, no. We've had, most of them have had two meetings so far. Many, many have only had one, and they're...
No, I know, I'm just asking, but you said, well, you're going to make a presentation at the joint meeting.
Only, that's from the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, the committee that presented the plan for the, to you, for the strategic plan. That committee that's been meeting since last February, I believe, is just coming before the joint committee to present our idea about the format.
Okay.
Okay, no, we're not, not done. There are a number of people right here on this school committee, and right here in this room are sitting on working groups.
Thank you, Martha. Jill?
The collaborative is struggling with getting enough drivers for buses. There's still a big need for drivers. So there is a subcommittee that's dealing with recruiting, recruiting and retaining drivers. There's a need at Nossett, Born, Monemoy, Turo, Nantucket, and Mashpee. The All Capes Professional Development Day, October 11th, there were over 550 registered people for 25 workshops. So that includes early childhood, specialties like social workers, psychologists, art teachers, music teachers. There were high winds that day, and 40 people from the Islands could not come, which was unfortunate. It was monsoon rain and wind and no ferry service. Waypoint Academy, the alternative high school program, where they had hoped that the school would remain at the wing school, it appears the town of Sandwich has to vote on it, but it looks as if it's going to be sold to a redeveloper for some sort of housing.
Yeah.
Or condos or whatever, it's not quite clear. So that's a big priority right now, to find a different place for the Waypoint alternative high school people. Those are the highlights, there's a meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. Preschool enrollment. Okay. All right, so PTA. So I, again, they have afternoon meetings, so I am unable to make every single one this year, so Mary Beth's kind enough to bring me the notes. So the spaghetti supper was a big success, the PTA is awaiting one more donation. They estimate they will have raised between $1,500 and $1,700 over last year. The total will be over $5,000.
Wow, wow.
That's great. And remember, we changed the date, right? So that was great for us, a new, in November versus March.
So from now, sorry, from now on, it's going to be in the fall?
I believe so, yeah. PTA gifted West the second partial payment of $5,000 for field trips and assemblies. The book fair will be open a half hour before the Thursday evening concert and immediately following the concert. That is the winter concert?
Correct.
And the date for that was...
Thursday this weekend.
Oh, Thursday, okay, gotcha. All right. And the PTA is planning an all-school dance for Friday, February 7th, from 6:00 to 8:30 in the cafeteria. And there's a great kids DJ who worked at Orlene School Dance, and so the PTA will provide snacks. So they're getting a DJ, a kids DJ.
Oh, how cool.
That's fun. Who's going to come dance with us?
Oh, wow.
Parent Lauren Hill was voted as PTA treasurer, and the next meeting is in February 11th at 6:00, so I'll be able to go to that one right after.
But Charity does a great job.
Oh, she's amazing. Yeah, yeah.
So well organized, just amazing.
That's great. Yeah, it was delicious. I actually went on a date with my husband, we, well, we didn't get there late, but yeah, we went. It was yummy. Okay. So that leads us to, do you have, what do you want? You don't have a wellness report?
No, I do not, I didn't go.
And, yep, and we'll, we'll deal with that for now and see what happens.
Okay, all right. And will you excuse me? I have to go to that Selectment meeting.
Okay. Future agenda items?
Yeah. My, I was upset at Suzanne coming and telling us something she hadn't told us before. Makes me very uncomfortable about, about this. The two things were, all of a sudden, there are other, other people parking here that we didn't know about. Second, there doesn't seem to be any supervision of who's parking there. And the third one was that the company signs a contract, but the writers don't necessarily know what the agreement is. That those three make me very uncomfortable about approving this.
So we will definitely, I think that will go on next month's agenda, and we can come to consensus about that, I think.
For record, I stand with you more than all of those issues. It doesn't happen often.
I know.
I think we were, we were all a little surprised, and, you know, we'll take some time and put it out there. Good? Okay, anything else that to consider on a future? Well, that's always going to be there. Okay, good, approval of minutes then. Do we hear motion?
Summer.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor? And I will pay bills next week, because I, I'm off this week on the paying bills. On a different cycle. All right, motion to adjourn?
Forgot to say something.
Oops, we didn't adjourn yet.
When I did talk to Becky, when Joan and Michelle and I went to talk to her, I met again with Joan and Michelle. We want to form a committee to work with the Recreation Department to start getting programs moving along. And if it's okay with everybody here, I'm happy to serve on that, since it works for all of the goals that I have for both of my big pieces.
So does that sound like an agenda item? Something you want to discuss?
Maybe. For now, I'll sit on it, and then if people need to vote on it or something.
Oh, so it's already formed?
What?
The committee's already formed?
It's, it's, they asked me to, to do that.
Okay.
To be there for the school committee.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about shall we form a committee?
It might be something that we have to talk about.
Well, it might be something that you want to report out eventually. Okay. So should we put that on for next time, or do you think you'll be meeting?
Well, I know some of us are meeting.
What's the name of the new committee?
We don't have a name.
No name call.
So Recreation Committee.
The Martha Gordon Call.
Recreation Programming Committee. We'll call it that until you give me a better name.
I would think Community Schools.
Community Schools Committee?
Well, it sort of fits into that goal.
Is this dealing with adult programming?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Community Schools Committee report, and then we can always change the name of it. No, you don't like that name? Email me. I'm not meeting with Tom until, I have two weeks.
I'll wait for your answer.
All right, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, so motion to adjourn?
I moved it.
Tradition.
Second.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.